Trying to put. Yeah, right. I mean, whenever you get it. Thank you.
So now are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, it is five thirty-three. And I called the November, the seventh meeting to order. Can we get roll call?
Mr. Gerard. Mr. Fractor.
Present.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Guerra.
Present.
And Ms. Gork.
Present.
Are there any changes to the minutes?
There, um.
Okay, as there are none, we approve the minutes. Staff, is there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Wonderful. As part of the certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. If you have, if you are attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone, then star six to unmute yourself.
No one online.
No one here with any comments today? Go. Um, okay. We have, um. First up on the consent calendar is the Stafford residence. I'm sorry, I'm in the, I'm in last week's. So Breckenridge Christian Ministries Housing Unit Conversion, a Class C development. PL twenty twenty-three dash oh five eleven. There's Alan. You look like you're at a bowling alley, Alan.
Yeah, so we just need to see if.
I do.
Anyone have any issues or are you going to consider the consent calendar approved?
Yeah. Anybody want to call it up? Yeah.
Seems straightforward.
All right. So we move on to the next item here. Would be the Roma, single-family residence. Final, I believe. Okay. Um. So Cliff, I think this is yours.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself. My employer may bill this. Thank you.
Becoming a habit with you.
Watch three times.
Alrighty, well. Get started, just a quick overview. This is the Roma, single-family residence here on Briar Rose. Um, previously, the project has had two preliminary hearings. Um, we had, um. One in September, I believe the fifth, and then October seventeenth, I believe. Um, I have the Roma residence here before you this evening for a final hearing. Um, the only changes that we have from the previous hearing is the addition of one cottonwood per planning commissioner's request. Unfortunately, Steve is not here with us this evening. Um, but, uh, that is the, the property owners did kind of, um. Agree to that request and have installed a cottonwood here, um, denoted on the plan, kind of to align with some of the cottonwood tree. Street trees we see in other parts of the historic district. Um, so just to give a final point analysis, um, we are. Um, recommending this, um, or staff has reviewed all of this for, you know, absolute and relative policies. Um, we are receiving a few negative points as well as positive points. Um, so we are receiving positive two points under twenty-two R landscaping, positive two points under three thirty-three R. Um, for the installation of two EV chargers. Um, there are three negative points being awarded under, um, policy twenty-four R social community, but from the handbook of design standards. And it's design standard three eighteen for the orientation of the garage. The final negative point is one negative point, um, for the four hundred and eighty-one square feet of snow melt. Um, and this is a proposal that we got prior to REMP, um, so this is not subject to REMP. Um, so it still gets that negative one point. So cumulative total score is a passing score of zero. Um, so staff makes a recommendation to council to approve this project on the final hearing.
Good. So questions for the commission. Does the commission have any other comments on the project or concerns with the point analysis?
Have none. No.
No comments.
Susan?
No comment.
Alan?
No comments.
And I have no comments. So.
There is a, um.
Do we need a motion to pass this? Anybody out there to, that has comments?
No one online.
Okay. No one in here? Good. So I believe we need a motion.
Oh, I can give it a try since Steve's not here. Um. I, uh, propose a motion to approve the Roma, single-family rev- residence PL two zero two three. That's zero three five four. Lot two eight block one, Weishorn subdivision. Do I need to say anything else on that?
I don't believe so. I think that's sufficient.
There's my second.
End.
All right. Can we get the roll call? Oh.
Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Ms. Gork?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard? Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Giller is abstained. Uh, Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes five zero.
I look forward to seeing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
For the bold that in the minutes of Steve, Stephen. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Early holiday gift. If it had lights, they weren't off.
No behinds. It brings us to other matters.
Uh, don't forget to let Mike come back in.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah.
You're bigger than life, Alan, Alan.
Yes, you are.
You look great.
Think I'm bigger.
Thank you.
Look comfy.
I feel great.
Where are you at?
I'm in, uh, we're in Las Cruces, New Mexico.
Wow.
And en route to, uh, Scottsdale tomorrow.
Nice.
We had sunshine and we're gonna get snow.
Yeah.
That's a good, good.
Lots to discuss.
You finished your part, did you?
Just a second.
Number two.
All right, at this time, uh, we typically, uh. First meeting of the, of November, we always appoint a new chair and a new vice chair. And so, um, want to thank Alan for serving capably the last year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for pitching in on those times when Alan wasn't here. So. Um, at this point, um, we would entertain a motion from any of the commissioners for, um, let's start out with the chair. Position and then we can do vice chair after that.
I nominate Mark, please. For chair.
Wow.
You knew that was coming.
I was gonna nominate Alan, so.
All right, we can do, do a roll call. Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Do I abstain?
I think you can vote for yourself.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Gork?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gerard and Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
All right, we have a new, new chair next meeting.
Mark, Mark, you can move over one seat.
Is that by design?
What's that?
That this is on Election Day?
No. Just coincidental.
Said this week in November.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's always the first meeting in November and first Tuesday is usually the election day.
Yeah. Yeah, occasionally though, I forget, um, where it falls, because it's, if it's, if it's like the first.
Tuesday, November one.
Yeah, it would not, so.
Right, we now entertain a motion for a vice chair.
Um, I'd like to nominate Ethan.
Knew that was coming.
I'll second.
All right, roll call. Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Gerard is absent. All right, passes six zero.
We're gonna do great.
If you like, I'll, I'll do the town council report. Um. So.
There he is.
Do a better job.
Uh, so, um, let's see, a few things on the, this was twenty-fourth a couple of weeks ago, because we had, um, fifth Tuesday. Um, last week, um, we had a, in, a, a, a little overview from Root Housing, Root Policy Housing. They did just finish a needs assessment for the entire county on housing needs for workforce housing. As you can imagine, it was, you know, there's plenty of need. Uh, primarily in town, um, identified for rental units. Um, there is a for-sale component as well, um, but it's not as great as a rental. So even though we brought on a lot, there's still a need for more and they've identified that need, including. After it considers projects in the pipeline, that there's still a need over the next five years for X number of units. I can't really remember. The exact, uh, I do have it written down. Next five years. What we need beyond what we have planned or approved to build is four hundred and twenty-six rentals at thirty to sixty percent AMI. And another two hundred and twenty-two for-sale units. So there continues to be da- demand that kind of outstrips supply and frankly, we're not going to get there with all those numbers, but anyway. It's good information for the council and, um, so, um, yeah. Uh. Let's see, uh, under, I guess mainly under planning, we had a, a number of issues, um, that we discussed. Um, Block eleven housing, um, is a first chance for council to discuss. There's about sixteen to eighteen acres left on Block eleven that have been, that are undeveloped. And so, um, that's like our last, one of our last big pools of property that we have left to develop. Uh, the council is very, um, interested in moving forward with something on that property. And, um, we plan on spending the next year kind of going through a planning process on that, which would at some point include kind of. Coming to the planning commission for entitlements. Um, and the thought right now, and we've got some real early concepts from Norris Designs. Is a lot of single-family and duplex. Um, so it'd be Wellington-ish, so to speak.
Eight units per acre-ish?
Um. No, more like, I think we're around five to six units per acre. But that includes all the open spaces within it. You know, the lots themselves, we're looking at small lots. We're like, single-family lots, we're looking like four thousand square feet. Which is relatively small, but it's very, very livable. And we're even looking at some smaller ones. We did a field trip down to, uh, Fort Collins and Boulder a month ago, and we found. Two thousand square foot lots with homes on them. There were actually. People are buying at market prices of like six hundred, seven hundred thousand down there, because these weren't deed restricted. And there's a market for those and people like it. There's opens near them, but not everyone needs a big yard and all that, so. We're gonna be looking at some kind of combination. The other thing is ADUs, accessory dwellings. Um, basically above every garage, um, for at least a single-family components. To maximize kind of the density and it also provides an income source for the people that own those in terms of rental. And then at, at the northern end of the property, transitioning to the higher density kind of a Uller Apartments, which is directly north of there. Where all the solar, um, panels are, um, be more of a townhome type thing. So that's what we're thinking right now. We're gonna be refining that in the upcoming months and working on that, um, in more earnest. But Norris is helping us with some really early conceptual workouts regarding that. Um, so, um. That's pretty exciting. We just had a few, um, things we talked with council about in terms of goals for the project and they were pretty much in alignment on. Most of this stuff and, um, you know, we're targeting. Hundred percent AMI for the for-sales, that type of thing, so. But there'll be a lot more to come on that and a lot of this stuff will still have to be refined over the next upcoming year. Anyway.
Have they set a, has anyone set a target date for breaking ground?
I think right now, the, the goal is probably to break ground in twenty twenty-five. Although there were some discussions about could we maybe go horizontal at the end of next year? I, realistically, I think it'd probably be beginning twenty twenty-five.
That far.
No, yeah, and what we've learned on projects is if we rush into them too fast. There's a lot of problems, but one of them is, is the funding piece in terms of you don't vet it probably as well as you'd like to. And then you have sometimes unpleasant things that pop up that end up costing a lot of money to resolve. And when you, if you just knew ahead of time, you could kind of plan for some of those a little better, so. Anyway, um, yeah, so that's where we're going with that. Um. We had a discussion about cultural arts, um, doing a visioning plan. I don't know, Julia, would you mind just saying a couple of words about that? To kind of give the planning commission a little sense of where we're going with that?
Um, yeah, so the cultural arts vision plan is gonna take a look at, um. All cultural arts in town, so it'll include, um, BCA, Breck film backstage. Um. The record, the music, um. As well, and as well as Breck history. So, um, probably missing somebody or two. Um, we're gonna have a group that involves all those key stakeholders, um, as a steering committee, um, for the process. And we will hire a consultant to kind of lead that, um. Process of creating the vision plan. I will involve, um, on the steering committee will likely have a private gallery owner as well. As, um, and art, like a local artist, um, this also. And we're looking at all the, just what does the town want to be? Within the next ten years as far as arts, um, cultural arts goes. And, um. It'll, one of the things we want to spur out of it in the end is the Riverwalk Center renovation. So that will be a second step to this all. Um. And there'll be other plans, I think, that get developed by the individual nonprofits. Probably that come out of this as well. So kind of an overarching goals and strategies, um, and some implementation. Um. Setting as well. And then kind of, we'll go from there, see where it takes us, but I anticipate it lasting about a year. Um, on the visioning process. Um, and then we're gonna, so we have a steering committee. We anticipate having what right, right now we're calling a visioning committee. Um, that'll probably change name, but that'll involve, um, a lot of other groups. Um, and so we'll. More on that to come, but we haven't had our first steering committee meeting yet, so. Probably kick that off in December.
Thanks, Julia. Julia's one of the leads on that. Her, along with Tamara Park from, uh, BCA, Breck Cultural Arts. Or Creative Arts, excuse me. Um. Uh, let's see, um, it's listed here, so I'll just mention it now. Um, so we had the call-up hearing, the de novo hearing on one fourteen South Main. Which you guys had seen a month or so previously. Um, the council's issues were, there, there was a couple of things mainly that came up on that. One of them was there was a kind of a question about the, the width of the building and if it was within the range of historic. Because they had kind of, they had received some public comments, like this seemed wider than, um, what was historically in the district. Um. Staff provided a bunch of good information about that. Sarah did a great job on that and, um, that it was within the range. It was the higher, it was a higher end of the range, but it's definitely within the range of the historic structures in that area, so. Um, and that appeased, um, the council's concern on that. The other issue was really one of, we had a little bit of discussion, I think, here too about, okay, you know, there's liquor. You know, th- there, there's gonna be, uh, you know, um, food in, in a part of this building, but a lot of it's not programmed that way. But what happens if it spills over into those areas and how do we protect against it just? You know, spilling over into those areas that are designated as retail right now and really. Part of it is, y- you know, they're just planning right now, kind of like a. Corn shell, just have this building ready to go for a tenant that comes in. They don't know exactly how it's gonna split out. So if we have to, we're gonna be assessing additional fees for water piffs, parking and that. Um, depending on how much of that building they actually use for, um, you know, for restaurant space eventually. But, um. Right now, as you know, as you probably remember, basically it's the same. It was the conversion was the same from the old use to, um, that was on the property to the new one. So anyway, um, council, after, you know, Sarah explained all that, was pretty comfortable with approving it, and so they did. So anyway, um, your guy's decision was upheld. Great, good job.
It's not to be overruled.
Yeah. Uh. Yeah, and then, um, finally, uh, we had BGV discussions. Um, and we focused, we're going back and forth. We've got two work sessions coming up here where we'll be. Continue to discuss parcels, but we talked about parcels one and two, so one being the North Gondola Lot, two being, um, North Gold Rush Lot. Um, at that meeting. And, um, so essentially on the North Gondola Lot, the council just wants to see that the drainage is addressed correctly. And, um, because right now there's no detention pond there, so they want to see something for that. And then, um. They're okay with some limited additional exterior lighting. And, uh, what were the other points on that, Chris? I'm starting to, um, lighting, oh landscaping, they just want to see a little perimeter landscaping. And then maybe, Chris, if you want to talk about parcel two.
Okay.
That was.
Yeah, in parcel two, um, we came back to that and there's a lot of discussion, um, you know, from the site planning perspective, ensuring that there'd be. Uh, maintaining adequate buffer along Park Avenue, along with supplementing, uh, new plantings to kind of diversify the stand there. Because we do have a nice mature buffer now, um, with mature lodge poles, but we want to make sure that's both maintained and then also. Um, due to the age that new stands will be growing up as well. Um, just also talked about potential site disturbance by building the structure into the hillside. And, uh, the council in general is supportive of, um, making an allowance where there would, in the development agreement, that would. Say that there would be no negative points under policy seven R for site disturbance. Um, because the, I think building into the hillside was more, uh, preferential than disturbing the trees in front. Uh, that was, that was the more important, like if those trees were touched, then they would be pretty heavy on, um. On, uh, site disturbance points. Um, also, there's been previous mining activities. There's some, um, disturbance to the hillside. They also talked about just the amount of, um, mountain type of, of programming for employee housing on the site. Uh, I'm trying to remember the exact numbers. I think there is approximately forty-one bedroom units. I think six, six-bedroom, um, apartments and another.
Forty-three studios.
Forty-three studios. And in general, I think they were comfortable at that amount. That's basically having a, a residential wrap along the whole eastern facade. Um, adjacent to Park Avenue, and we think that actually makes the building look better. That looks more like a residential building than a parking structure. And then the roof forms and everything also, um, kind of do a nice job of kind of masking that, that parking structure. There are other items we'll have to return to, one being, uh, the pedestrian crossing, um, from the structure, the Park Avenue. Um. They are proposing to still have shuttles that would take the, the skiers from that parking structure over to the gondola. Um, and another agreement would not to be, to open that structure until all the other lots were filled, both North and South Gondola. To, to kind of not make it as much of a free-for-all. And, um, and then really focusing in on safe crossings for, uh. The residents of that building. They got into some discussions in terms of what appropriate rents are for all the different unit types. Uh, but in general, uh, the council, I think, was pleased with the diversity of having, you know, pretty straightforward one. Bedroom and studio units to the larger six-bedroom that will, um, you know, have their own private bath space for each bedroom, but will have a common kitchen and living area. That is, um, kind of like a modern dorm to a certain extent, or could house an entire family if that was, uh, needed as well.
So what was the, the total number of beds?
Eight, nine? The total number of beds, let's see, uh, it is approximately. Just a little bit under like one twenty.
Yeah. Not every council member was, a couple of them were like, not sure, maybe a little bit too much, but I think overall, we, we heard that. From the majority of them, that they were okay with that amount of density, so, um.
Yeah, I think, you know, just as a, as a benchmark, Pinewood One, which is approximately about a block and a half away. is about it's probably like eight percent, um, less density, but in terms of the scale of, um, square footage and, um, and, uh, bedrooms, it's, it's kind of comparable to like what they're proposing there.
Is the parking garage still the same size or?
It's, it's, um, I would say it's roughly the same size. You know, we've, we've asked them to look at, you know, kind of pushing it back into the hillside and it's not exactly the same, but I would say, you know, if, if you looked at, you know, the previous one and you looked at the new one, you'd say that looks like the same structure. In, in terms of the footprint of the actual parking, it's just that there's more of a rap to, um, the residential component.
Yeah, Mike, the, but the parking that they have to accommodate there now is roughly like four hundred and forty spaces as opposed to the master plan that you guys approved before, which there was like a thousand spaces. So, you know, the difference is like Chris says, it's like the foot, a lot of the footprints being occupied by the housing.
Yeah, and the, and the parking associated with that. So, yeah, it's, it's, before it was the majority parking structure, now there's a, a greater proportion that's housing.
Were there any preliminary proposals for the, uh, pedestrian crossing?
We're, we're still kind of talking that through with Shannon Smith and that's, that's to be discussed at the, uh, November twenty-eighth meeting. So really, we're to be jumping, we're, Mark and I are kind of wrapping up our memos for, uh, the next meeting on the fourteenth and probably before we even discuss, uh, those issues with the council, we'll be meeting internally based on proposals that applicants are supplying, just because of the Thanksgiving holiday, so.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a whirlwind. Chris has done an amazing job with this, trying to manage it all. And, uh, anyway, but we're, we're getting there little by little. The hope is that that meeting in December is, we already pretty much know what all the deals, deal points are in this and that we'll be going through those one by one and seeing, these are the major deal points that would have to be included in this development agreement. And then we proceed to hearings on the development agreement in January. So, but, um, it continues to get pushed out a little bit. I know at one point Rick Holman was hoping it would still kind of be closed bu- by the time he retired, but that's just, it's not possible. It's just been too much out there, but. Yeah. So we'll keep you posted. That's it.
Be interesting. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, it is six oh six, the meeting is adjourned.
You do, you're, you're efficient.
You're hired.
So long, everybody.
Yeah.
We are, so we're here today.
Have fun.
I'm in, uh, Las Cruces.
Las Cruces.
Warm weather while we freeze.
That's why we're here.
This would be hard, they're called like yesterday in the days.
See how warm it is in November now, sometimes.